Okay, call the meeting order, stand for the pledge please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, everybody present. At this time, we will do the AOK Awards. Michael, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. So I'd like to call up our first AOK Award, Jackson Twilliger. So Jackson, come right over in the middle bud. So Jackson, with a number of other students, they come early in the morning when their older siblings have band, and these students were able to go and help another teacher with something that was going on prior to the school day starting. Usually they just get to hang out with me in the office. Sometimes I can give them my full attention, sometimes I can't, but that day, they helped Ms. Kurtzman's in her pre-K room, help organize the room, right? All three of them, they volunteered to come to her classroom, sort, organize, and allocate a massive Scholastic book order. So thank you very much, Jackson. All right. Next up, we have Emery. Emery Bumhard, come on right up. So Emery was nominated by Ms. Wees, and almost every morning, Emery finishes cleaning up her STEM bin and always helps other friends clean theirs up without being asked. So it's that act of kindness that we wanted to show for you today, okay? Thank you, Emery. And our last award here for GRM is Caleb Smith. Come on up, bud. So this award was also nominated by Ms. Wees. Caleb earned a sticker from our classroom sticker store for his good behavior. He chose a sticker, but another classmate wanted it, the exact same one. He gave up that sticker in order to make his classmate happy, and that is an act of kindness. Thank you, Caleb. Thank you guys for all coming out. I'll pass it off to the high school principal for his acts of kindness.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenteri. Um, so I don't believe my student is here, but I still want to recognize him in front of everybody, that is Josh Morabito. And he was nominated by Mrs. Halleck in our cafeteria. So Josh and another student were in the breakfast line on September 22nd, 2022. The other student lost his money for his coffee, and you know, high school kids, they love that coffee, that needs to get them revved up in the morning too. Um, and without missing a beat, Josh spoke up and said he would pay for the coffee. He kind of said, put it on my tab. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, and Mrs. Halleck said, it's nice to see students doing nice things for each other, and you know, that's what we're trying to promote at the junior senior high school. So congratulations to Josh on the AOK Award. Thank you.
So I apologize, but we had just one more act of kindness walk on through, all right? And I'd like to invite up Caleb and Julia Clay. So Caleb and Julia were also helping Jackson when they came in, when their older siblings come in for band, and they were able to help Ms. Kurtzman organize her room that morning. Without hesitation, they went right up, they helped, and it was a wonderful act of kindness. I wanted to thank both of you for your act of kindness, all right? Caleb, there's yours, and Julia, there's yours. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Halleck.
Okay. At this time, as I always do, you can stay and be bored and listen to us, or we will not be insulted if you head back home on a nasty night. Thanks for coming out.
Wait, is it over already?
Can I go with you?
That was good.
Is it over already? Thanks for coming. That's all right. I say the same thing every, every meeting. All right. Yup, yup. All right, at this time, we will do the super tennis report.
Okay, so I'm gonna start off with, um, you know, with like a, the bond project update. And as of right now, we will be calling a special board meeting on October 19th at the junior, senior high school at 6:00 PM. The reason I feel this is needed is for, basically, we have just gotten our final numbers for the bond project, and Caleb, myself, Dr. Morgano, and our bond team, the council, we went through it, and I want to make sure that we get all the bang for our buck. We're crossing Ts, dotting Is, making sure that we have anything that's possibly aidable, getting aid. So we're going through that very carefully. Right now, we have come to the finalized numbers for the bond, which I'll be updating the website with, the bond page, also any mailers and flyers that are going out. Um, we're also gonna send out information on, um, the frequently asked questions and on Facebook. So as of right now, the total bond would be $12.73 million. Borrowing would be $11.165 million. Our share is the difference between, and that is 1.56 million, but that ensures that we are still tax neutral. There is no impact of tax, and that's my biggest thing, and we have said that from the beginning, and I'm not gonna change that. So we find, and again, we're gonna, those numbers are good, we have confidence that we can get everything accomplished on our, um, the scope of the project. So the frequently asked questions, I got an email from a community member, she asked 11 questions, and so I created an FAQ out of it, and with the FAQ, it's gonna be posted on the website tomorrow, on the bond page, I'm also gonna post it on Facebook. And I'm gonna run quickly through some of her questions. A lot of it is, um, you know, how long is this gonna take? What about practices and games and things with our sports? So talking with our bond team this morning, we are looking at, we're taking a constructive, conservative construction, um, projections because of supply chain issues and making sure we can get everything. The construction time period will be from late October 24th through the summer of '25 with just the sports facilities. Um, and then, you know, you can look at these FAQs online because they will be there. We are gonna try to manipulate the seasons so that we can start home games, maybe front load home games, and then back end away games so then we can start, or, and then the opposite, so we won't lose entire seasons. It is important for the community to see those home games, it's important for parents, it's important for our kids. So we are gonna be able to manipulate the schedule so we can kind of have both, which is a good thing, and they agreed with bond team met, and that was the architect, the engineers, and the designer, and they all said that's doable. And, um, you know, we have, we will be reaching out to the towns of Lumberlin and Highland just to see about using some, you know, their, some of their facilities in case we have to move practices and games. So we will be working with them, we also wanna partnership, our partner with our little league teams just to make sure everybody is on board. You know, because of, as of right now, just this fall season, 45% of our elder junior, senior high school population is in sports. Very few schools can say almost half of their kids are involved in a sport, so we can say that, and that's actually grown a lot since last year. We now have cheerleading, cheerleading for the first time in five years, and that's with 10 girls. So we are bringing stuff back. So this will be posted. And, um, I also have a great email from Mr. DiAmico, and I wanted to share, and I think we forwarded it to the board, is that in this Lisa? I didn't... Mr. DiAmico sent me a beautiful email complimenting Mr. Carpenteri and his leadership at George Ross McKendie and how he has seen such a change in the staff, he has seen a change in, um, just the culture of the building, and I just want to share it with everybody. Thank you. Um, good morning, Mrs. Ferrera. As you know, last night was the elementary open house. As a father of multiple children in the school district for the past seven years, I have seen a lot, some I can agree with and some that makes me shake my head. A couple of years, we received a new principal, and I would like to talk about that. As I said, I dealt with GRM for seven years now, and these years that Mr. Carpenteri has been the principal, I have to say here, have been the best that I have seen the school in all seven years. It was the best thing the school district could have done, I see staff happier, I know my children are happier, and he is a real star for such a small school, and I'm glad to have him helping these children become people. Again, I just wanted to reach out and say thank you for him. So that was a lovely email, so I did want to make sure, include that. And then, the last thing I have is, um, we just installed, we received them, installed them, digital clocks and PA system for the elementary school, so in all the classrooms, they have nice digital clocks, and they can hear announcements, it's not coming through the phone, it is beautiful. And then for the high school, we did receive our Halo smart sensors, they have arrived, and installation will also begin that as well. The Halo, um, smart sensors is, um, they are installed in the restrooms, and one, the vaping is one issue, but on top of it, it does have other amenities as far as carbon dioxide, air quality, which kind of goes along with COVID, and then on top of it, if there is aggressive action, and they even like verbally speak and there's certain words, it will notify us if there is an, an argument that can escalate in the bathroom, then all of a sudden, we get notified. So it kind of plays into the security and safety of the high school. So they're here, now we get to install them, and we've been waiting, Jed led that one, and we've been waiting three months on that shipment, about, so we're good to go. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrera. Any questions from the board?
I have one, um, regarding the, the Halo sensors. Do you anticipate that there's going to be any pushback from the community regarding privacy because they're installed in bathrooms?
We, it's not a video, it, um, as far as, we can turn things off if there's an issue with privacy, several school districts have done this, um, and we reached out to them, and they haven't had the pushback. We have, but I will definitely double check, and with our attorney and everything, right now, it seems like there's not an issue with privacy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Well, good, Dr. Morgano just joined us, I see. Hello, Dr. Morgano.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, I see that. Do you want to just continue to get this done?
Yeah.
Okay. Elementary principal report, Mr. Carpenteri, you're up.
Thank you again, Mr. Halleck. So in front of you, board members, Tracy, you have the attendance numbers. These numbers are accurate all the way up till Tuesday of this week. So we have dipped our overall attendance just below 95%, we're sitting at 94.94%. Um, so I'll be working with the school psychologist and school counselor to come up with some ways to incentivize making sure children come to school. Um, these numbers still do include those students that have to be absent due to a COVID positive case, um, and so when you take those out, um, our attendance is just a little bit over 96%. We have seen a little bit of an increase of students who've had to be out for at least five days due to COVID. Um, pertaining to our academic outcomes, we're implementing new standard-based report cards. Um, I sent out, um, the report card itself is in, it's the final stages of completion, and I've been communicating with parents through school messenger about the new standards that they will receive. Um, implementing really great reading program, teachers have already begun implementing the program, it goes from pre-K to fifth grade, um, and we're just gonna await the progress monitoring, the data in the next few weeks to see what kind of growth, um, is occurring. For state testing, the parent letter's been finalized with the scores going out at the end of this week, preferably tomorrow, if not first thing in the week on Monday. So parents will receive their students' state assessment scores in ELA, math, and science. Extracurricular activities, um, we have over 12 different clubs for our fall, uh, session of clubs. Over 175 out of 241 children are enrolled in clubs. Um, we have a couple of new clubs, we have the pen pal club, we have the rock climbing club, given opportunity today, please go see our new rock climbing wall in the gym. Uh, Mr. Keith had such immense interest in the club, we had to run two sessions of it. Um, we're running a Play-Doh club for our little kids, our little guys, which is, uh, also have to have two sessions. I'm running Lego club again, um, we have a paper weaving club, there's a number of different clubs, art club, painting club, that kind of fit every child's passion, which I'm really, really proud about. Um, we're gonna begin screening for Odyssey of the Mind, and student council will be voted, so our fifth and sixth graders are representatives for our student council, they'll be voted on, on election day on November 8th, and they'll give their speeches that morning in the school. So pending any questions, that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the board? With 96%, Caleb, that state, that helps for state aid, correct?
Yeah, it does.
Now, does the state aid recognize that a couple of cases were covered, and we still get that or not?
No, they did for a short while during COVID, they suspended the kind of attendance for, you know, but now they're back to accounting it, and essentially what they do is they take your, your average daily attendance is what they count as your enrollment, so it's not your actual enrollment, so.
I was just, I know, I know our enrollment consists of state aid, so. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? No, we're good? All right. Big Mike, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Uh, my apologies for not looking as sharp as Mr. Carpenteri tonight, um, it was school spirit day, I was not supposed to be here because we were gonna have our fundraising and our bonfire, but I'm here because everything is moved to tomorrow, which I will explain. Um, I don't have this on my report, but I will mention our attendance in the month of September, the junior senior high school was at 95.12% attendance. Um, it has dipped a little bit in October, but we are, we're working on that every single day. The junior senior high school had the open house on Thursday, September 22nd. Uh, it was great to see parents in the building, um, and they got to meet their, the teachers, you know, their, their children's teachers, and that was great. Um, I'd like to thank the faculty and staff for making it a smooth open house. We also had a senior parent meeting, we're gonna be doing more to reach out to our seniors, um, specifically, and figure out post-secondary, what do they want to do? Do they want to go to college, two-year, four-year? Do they want to go into the workforce, they want to go into the military? So we're making a strong push for that. So we will have future senior meetings as well. Um, and then the, we had a club fair on September 23rd for the whole school in the gym. Every club set up kind of a trifold board, had their advisor there along with students that were in the club, um, and, and kids got to walk around, it was very cool to see , um, kids, you know, pique their interest and sign up for whatever club that might interest them. We have a, a number of clubs at the junior, senior high school. On the, uh, September 29th, we had an assembly for our whole school. Um, Coach Ryan Nakarado, um, was there to deliver a positive message to our students. Coach Knack, um, kind of told them if they face hard times, they can persevere, and kind of motivated them. The biggest thing that I took away from that, and when I, uh, you know, booked them for the assembly was, the assembly's great, but I really want you to, uh, hang out with the kids during lunch. So, um, the greatest part was he was in all three lunch periods, he was in the cafeteria, then he went outside with the kids, he was playing basketball, he was playing all different kinds of things with the kids, and really connected with them. So it's just always good to see an outside face and, uh, you know, get to talk to somebody else. On September 30th, Ms. Garen took 15 students to Bethel Woods for a leadership conference. Um, that was a great opportunity for those students that we had, and I believe I got something today that they're offering, another leadership opportunity, so we'll take a look at that. VOTEC presentations, our eighth graders are going to VOTEC Expo tomorrow, October 14th, and then our 10th graders, um, will take part in a, they will come to us, VOTEC will, on October 21st, Friday, to hear about VOTEC and what might interest them in that program. So homecoming week is here, um, due to the weather, we did move everything. Um, so tomorrow, this is what tomorrow looks like, basically a rundown. During ninth period, uh, students will take part in a pep rally, um, where I tried to get an emcee, but it looks like I will be doing it, so, uh, that should be fun. Um, then from 4 to 6 will be our fundraising, where our clubs will have, uh, food, so all are welcome, please come, come out and support, uh, the classes, the advisors, and you know the, the students that are helping out. That's from 4 to 6. At 5:30, uh, we have the local fire, fire department's help, we will be lighting the bonfire, um, AKA, I think I've been hearing it's cardboard, um, on the, uh, by the tennis courts. So the fundraising will take part, uh, that will be, take place, excuse me, on the parking lot right in front of our entrance, and then the bonfire will be the, by the tennis courts. Um, our seniors are gonna be honored before the football game at 6:30, all of our fall athlete seniors will be honored before the game, and then we have a football game at 7 o'clock that night, and, uh, we're taking on Tri Valley, and then on Saturday, we have our homecoming dance for grades 7 through 12, uh, from 7, 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock. So, uh, and it should be, it's gonna be a fun couple of days, we always love homecoming and seeing the school spirit and the school pride, so, uh, I'm looking forward to it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
Nope, thank you.
Unfortunately, I will be out of town, or I will be attending all that tomorrow. But I will be out of town. Okay, Director of Instructional Service, we do not have a student here tonight, so you're up, Mr. Grubbs.
All right, thank you, Mr. Halleck. Um, I want to let you know that we have submitted our school comprehensive education plan for this year and our district comprehensive improvement plan for this year. Both of them, uh, look at areas such as math, literacy, our MTSS program, and attendance, and college and career readiness. So those are our areas of focus for the district and for the junior, senior high school. Those come in play because, um, our district is still on our targeted school list. We're hoping that with scores this, this year, they may take us off, but, um, there's a plus and a minus for that, because when we're on the list, as Caleb knows, we get the funds from the, uh, from the government, and when we're not on the list, we lose out on some of those funds. Um, for some of those activities that we are participating in, in our upcoming October conference day, on October 24th, we have a conference day that's set up. We specifically listened to the staff, that they said they have lots of programs that are purchased by the district, and not everybody is understanding how to use them. So we're using that day to provide, uh, in-service for our staff on the use of many of the programs, and there's a list of them, if you hear your, uh, children or anybody talk about them, iExcel is a program, RTI Direct is a program, Nearpod, Problematic, Castle Learning, Really Great Reading, our Renaissance Learning Suite, our Google suite of programs. So a number of those, we're going to have people that come in from, um, those companies themselves to provide in-service training to our staff. We have a couple of members of our staff, Sue Glantz and Laura Moon, that will be presenting during that day, and we also have people from SCBOSE. So it's a big range of individuals that are going to present to our staff on all of the programs so that everybody's on the same page. If there's any need after that, that there needs to be further follow-up, we can do that. So, uh, it's kind of a glimpse of the programs that we have, and to make sure that everybody kind of understands what we are putting forth. And also, we have, um, our outside consultant from BOSE is coming in every Wednesday, she's working with our staff at the elementary level on the writer's workshop. So, uh, there's a writing process that is put in place for our writer's workshop, and she's working on some of those prompts and skillsets for our staff to better improve students so that they become great writers also. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? From the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on. Caleb?
Okay, um, just to touch up on what he said with the, um, targeted schools grant that we get, um, that, that wouldn't be a loss this year anyway, so in order to get off that list, we have to have two straight years of, of meeting their specifications, so, so we would still have it for another year after, we'd have to get those scores twice. Uh, on buildings and grounds, we currently have an issue with our HVAC system here in the elementary school. The software that runs the system is outdated. Uh, the upgrade necessary for the software would cost right around $30,000. Um, the software requires a newer operating system as part of the issue, um, so it needs to get updates. The software we have, they're no longer going to cover, and to get the new software, we'd have to update the operating system, so it's like $30,000. Now, we've been exploring putting both buildings on the same system. Over here, it's Siemens, over there, it's Train. Um, so right now, we're having discussions, and it's just to make the board aware of upgrading to Train early. Now, neither of these two things are in our budget at the moment, so I'm looking at different ways to finance it, to see if we can get NISED money, um, we'll probably reach out to Aileen Gunther to see if we can get some money for it, because to convert, the quote we got is $126,000. But at the same time, it smarts really bad to upgrade something for $30,000 that I'm planning to replace in two years. So that's, that's currently the discussion on that. Um, right now, we're just looking at, at the financing, but it's gonna have to happen this year, because Jed, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, I think November is when they stopped supporting it, and that means we'll no longer get like patches and security upgrades and things. So, you know, you figure, they send one out every month, so by December, we're already gonna not be up to date, so we're, it's something we're gonna have to move on relatively quick, and I'll, and I'll fill you guys in more on what we end up doing in November, and you guys can ask questions and input here, of course. In the cafeteria, we've begun switching over our menus to allow for healthier options. Jill and June are preparing salads daily, they've also been doing wraps, uh, they do a tuna wrap, a Caesar salad wrap, and the idea is to get, one is to get more participation in lunch, and two is to get kids healthier food. And the Caesar salad wrap is really popular, June actually, and the, um, high school has to put out something in the morning to kind of figure out how much to get, because people are, people are liking that one. Um, we're also looking to begin a program, uh, and Jill has been, and working with them on this, um, there's a farm-to-table program in New York, which is, we try to get, um, one meal a month, we're gonna start at, but you know, eventually, we'd like to expand it, that's made completely from produce in New York. So they'll start doing that, one, just once a month at first, just because it can, sometimes it can be difficult to source everything that way, also, we order a lot of our food upfront, obviously, I don't want to throw anything away at the moment. So they're gonna serve through that before we start doing any of that also. Um, and then after that, we're gonna look at some other changes, but that's what we're doing in the cafeteria right now. Uh, transportation, we've gotten 11 of our new buses, we're still waiting on four of them, they're supposed to come by the end of October, uh, and then we should have our full new bus. We do still have the ones, and we haven't had to make a payment on the ones that, uh, we had previously leased. We just invested our funds, I put a little spreadsheet there for you guys to look at. Um, interest rates are a lot higher now, uh, right now, we have $10 million in the bank, uh, because we have, uh, most of our tax money, that's not 10 million that we get to keep, that's all gonna get spent throughout the year. We get our money upfront, I don't want to make it sound like we got 10 million just sitting around. We do not. But in the meantime, we should be able to earn interest of right around $108,000 for this year. I had only had budgeted $3,500, that's because in April, before the economy blew up, we were getting about 0.1% on our money. And now we get 2.83 in our NYMEX account, and I'm also gonna put half of the money into a three-month treasury bond, which will give us right around 3.53%. Um, so we should make some decent money, which will help kind of offset the other things that are costing us. Um, as far as the bond project, Tracy already filled you in on it, we're still on track for December 6th. Um, I attached a handout actually for you guys, you guys can take that home and look at it, it's rather long, but that's our most recent financial analysis that shows like the bond payments, the amortization schedule, how much comes from us, what's capitalized interest. Uh, it's $12,730. It shows us kicking in 1.5 million, we intend to come well under that if we are able. Um, that just gives us, we need some level of flexibility, because you don't want to, you don't want to cheap out on the project either. Um, so we're gonna go tax neutral, we want to be able to get what we want to get done, and we have to do the bond, we have to get 45 days notice for the vote, so that's what we're gonna vote at, that doesn't mean that you have to spend $12,730. If we can find $300,000 in savings, you can spend $12,004, that's okay, you just can't go above $12,730. Um, and it is also tax neutral, we're 100% committed to that, so that's why the change is, uh, our financial analyst came back, uh, with some different numbers and said, hey, this is what you need to do to make it neutral, and we said that's what we'll do then. Uh, so that's what I've got for you this week.
Okay, thank you. Caleb, any questions from the board?
Yes. Caleb, once we've made the decision on how we're going to fund the upgrade or switching over, how quickly can that be done for the HVAC system?
That's another question, we've asked Train and, um, Jed, you might be able to help me on this, because Jed works with us a lot. Um, how long did they think the lead time was? It was a few months, right?
We didn't get a positive answer from that, on the lead time. They kind of lose the fact that it may take several months, and, uh, but they're gonna explore, you know, we're, we're looking at a smart and harsh program, where are people who work in that value, you know, and, uh, see, uh, there's a matter of finding parts.
Yeah, well, it wasn't, it wasn't, I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you, it wasn't an ideal, uh, scenario, um, especially with the supply chain issues, but, uh, it was several months.
And why did we just come across this information?
I don't know.
Can you find out?
I can, I will find out for you and get back to you, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So what happens if something goes wrong between now and the time that we are able to upgrade?
Well, I think Jed can help with that a little more, but that's, it's really security updates, right?
It's security updates, the system will continue to work as it is, it's just that we're taking a chance by leaving it on, the longer we leave it on, the greater the risk.
So, you know, think of, think of like, you know, you have your personal computer, you got your virus updates, right? If you all of a sudden stopped getting updates, the first month would probably not be an issue, but normally what they do, your virus protection, like malware bites, like we have updates for when people make a new virus, or people make a new Trojan horse, we're not getting those updates. So as more and more new security threats come out, it becomes more of an issue. So it's not something like, that's going to shut down- So it's not something like that's going to shut down the school in the month thereafter.
So if something needs repair, it will still be able to be done?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and the HVAC isn't going to shut down.
All right. Anything else? Okay, I guess it's my turn. All right, just real quick, uh, Tracy, Caleb, myself met with the senior citizens in Lumberlin about the bond last Wednesday, I think it was. And then Tuesday night, we went to the Town of Highland Town Board Meeting and explained what we're doing with the bond. We're just trying to get the word out there and not, we're trying to get the facts out there, not what you hear people turning things around, this and that. And the biggest thing is there's no tax impact. That's the biggest thing that we want people to know. Their taxes aren't gonna go up to do this. We're, 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 we're sticking to our word. I know Tracy and Caleb's been working on it hard. I've been on the phone several times with them about things, and we're, and our plan is to, to, to stick to that with no tax impact, so, uh, I just wanted to put that out there. And, uh, I know we had a dinner last night, we recognized two people, Jen Anderson and...
Amanda Ross.
Amanda Ross, up at the Villa Roma. So that's all good stuff. Things are going good for Eldred, I believe, and, uh, enrollment's up, correct?
Yes.
So that, that's, that's all good. 49% of our kids are playing sports. All good things are happening in Eldred. I think that's important. All right, moving on. Public comment on the consent agenda items only. Any public comment? I didn't think so. All right, at this time, I will take a motion to approve consent items 501 through 810. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Amador. Any, uh, conversation?